P M. Parole call plea. President Hernandez.
Here.
Vice President Esses. Trustee Alcimorano.
Here.
Trustee Vanda.
Here.
Trustee Sukumara.
Here.
Okay, if we can please do the pledge of allegiance. Let's do it. Will you leave us please?
Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Adjustments to the agenda. The library board will discuss the order of the agenda, amend the order, and the items, no abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, and request calendar consent items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. The library board may also remove items from the consent calendar before that portion of the agenda. The library board may take care of these issues for official city record purposes by entertaining a formal motion. Public comment, anyone wishing to address the library board on these matters has a li- time limit of three minutes.
There's no one here, yes?
Yes, just by way of introduction seated to my right is Thomas Garcia. Tommy, he's been with us a few weeks now, he's the assistant to the city manager. He spent a bu- a good part of his career at the Imperial County Sheriff's Office, and then more recently with the City of Brawley as assistant to the city manager. So we're fortunate to have him as part of our team.
Yeah, welcome. Nice to meet you.
These chairs don't have seat belts, I think.
Oh my goodness. Um, okay, well, thank you for joining us, I appreciate your time. Um, okay, so let's go on to matters not a- not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the library board concerning any item within the board jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. At that time state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the library administrator's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Okay, let's move on to items A, presentations, A one. Presentation by Elizabeth Louviano, a lit- literacy coordinator regarding Imperial Public Library After School Snack and Enrichment Program and Imperial Public Library Teen Interns.
This is one of your visions come true.
I am so excited.
We found funding.
Yes.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
Hello everyone, I'm Elizabeth Louvano, I'm literacy coordinator here at the Imperial Public Library. I'm pleased to be able to present to you a new grant, a partnership grant. We're very familiar with Lunch at the Library. It's a program that we provide lunch and enrichment activities over the summer. When school's out, we are in. Um, and this year, we applied for the partnership grant. So the partnership grant extends the enrichment activities throughout the year, so there's no gap. We started in winter. Next year, we have the option to start in fall. So we can go straight from summer into fall and throughout the year if we decide to do that. Okay, so as you can see from the lovely pictures, we have an amazing partner, Nameth Holler, who brings us boxes and boxes of the best produce. And this is through Project Food Box, and Project Food- Food Box, um, is our most expensive snack. We do not have to pay for any of the fresh produce, and let me tell you, the fruit is better than what you can buy at the grocery store. It is so fresh, and all of our patrons are so grateful. Um, so, straight out of the field to us. And so each snack that we provide with our enrichment activities must contain two components. So we often, we always have the fresh fruit or fresh vegetables, thanks to Project Food Box. And we pair it with either a protein or a grain. And our patrons have really enjoyed the yogurt and these Bobo apple pie things, which are not sweet, um, they're healthy grains. And, um, part, my favorite part of this grant is being able to fund our amazing interns. So we have been able to make our Imperial Public Library internship um, starting in the fall and keep them all the way until the end of the school year. So our interns that you see in the picture, if you look at the middle picture, there's Drew Brennan, Kaylani Sessena, and Madison Taylor, and we have Madison sitting with us here. And, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they are here to help kids with their buddy reading or their homework. And each day starts off with a snack around three thirty when our friends get off of school. When they get out of high school, they walk over here or drive over here. Uh, Drew is actually a college student at IVC, so he is still a teen, but a college student teen. So they come here at three thirty and they set up the snacks, and then the kids come and they help them with their homework. And following the homework or the buddy reading, they go straight into an enrichment activity. So today, we did a, um, uh, intern-led science activity. So Madison planned it and she procure- procured all the materials and advertised it. And we had a huge group today that were doing magic bubbles. So it doesn't sound as cool as it actually really is.
No, it sounds really cool.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for people in our community to come get a snack and, um, have some fun. And so on Wednesdays, um, they have a variety of board games. And as you can see on the left picture, one of our staff members, Genesis, is teaching the interns how to play Sequence, which is a more complicated board game. So now they are familiar with our whole array of board games. So whoever comes in, they can teach the game to and, uh, play with them. And then you can see Kaylani in, um, on the edge of these pictures preparing things for our literacy program. She was making some flashcards, so they help all over the place with us. Oh, and on Thursday, we have, um, enrichment activities run by our staff member, Robert De Dios. And he does chess and video gaming. And our grant was able to purchase, um, more controllers, so that was pretty awesome. And it also provides, um, all of our, um, materials for our programs. So you'll see those beakers in the corner. Madison is well-known for her chemistry experiments, so that's why I put that up there. But everything is paid for through, um, CLA and our Lunch at the Library grant for these enrichment activities. So they can dream big. And here's some of the supplies that we've bought for our after-school program. Um, the Nintendo controller, of course, school supplies. We've bought so many, uh, board games, I have them in my office in a nice little tub, so they are organized and portable. But, um, we also use those during our Lunch at the Library program over the summer. Um, video games, and this animation studio. IT is right now working with me to download the software and make sure it's on correctly. I went to the Q Conference last year, thanks to the library sending me and the state of California sending me. And I was able to make a stop-motion, uh, video by myself, and it, in like a matter of three minutes. So anyone can make stop-motion with these cameras, it's really neat. And that's also part of our sustainable STEM philosophy here. We have these kits that can be used over and over and over again, so we don't have to keep buying supplies. And there's no waste, so super great for everybody. The little guitar, uh, was what Drew, uh, imagined up this month for his. He is a guitar player himself, so it was perfect. Uh, next week, Kaylani's group is gonna make butter. And there's one of the, eh, uh, chemistry program experiments that, um, Madison dreams up. She did a really great one with, um, dry ice, it was pretty impressive. And here's a little guy that was part of our outreach this summer with Lunch at the Library. We went to the USDA housing, and this is not an element of our snack time right now, but it can be if we ever have enough staff to go out to the USDA housing, uh, complexes. But we, um, hopefully, we are going to be able to hire two intern leads, and one team can spend three days at the, three lunches a week at the USDA housing with kids like this little guy here. And one of the coolest parts of our CLA grant is free books for your home. So we have plenty of books to check out and share with our community, but these books go home with the child and stay with the child, and they grow their library. That's an integral part of Lunch at the Library in the summer. So this just follows through the year. So they can come, have their snack, get help with their homework, get a free book, and then have fun. Does anyone have a question? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's incredible. My, I, I couldn't say anything when you were up here because I'm holding back the tears. Um, I, 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 we were up here, I don't remember how many of us were up here, and we dreamt, and we said, we would love to see something like this. And I've told Amber, it's, and it matches perfectly with our library. It's like we planted the seeds and we just had to be patient for them to grow. And the opportunities manifested, and this grant happened. We got it, and it's just incredible to see something that we just, you know, they say dream big, and then it happens, but it can't happen without you guys. So thank you for everything that you guys are doing, and the little smiles, and that, that little boy's smile is priceless. So, um, I really do hope, and we will advocate so that we can get enough staff. So, um, whoa, okay. Well, I haven't been a crier until as of recent, so, um, alright. So if anyone else has anything to add?
Um, just congratulations for, you know, making this a success, uh, with the grant. Um, knowing that in the Imperial Valley alone, there's at least fifty-four, over fifty-four percent of the kids, uh, have food, uh, insecurity, this really, these programs really do matter. So to see that, um, being done here in the library, I hope other libraries, you know, continue to follow, you know, in our path, and, you know, we just inspire each other, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, I just wanted to say, I met Elizabeth when I would bring my daughter. And this was way before, so from day one when I met you and, and I saw the activities and just speaking with you, I was just so impressed with just your passion and dedication and everything you were doing. So even before being here, I was just so impressed when I met you and everything you do.
Thank you. An additional exciting part about this, um, after-school snack program, and I don't, Liz, would you like to talk about it? About since it's being donated, um, since, rather than, um, getting provided through the school district, we're able to provide everybody?
Oh, yes, um, when we do Lunch at the Library over the summer, it is sponsored by the school district, which is incredibly gen- generous. And, um, since it's from the school district, it's only schoolchildren that can eat the food. And oftentimes, uh, moms, dads, grandmas, uncles, they, you know, they're hungry. And we, we have to sort of reach out in the community and explore options this summer to help with that. But since, um, Project Food Box got involved, and, um, the city helps pay for the snacks, um, moms, dads, uncles, aunts, they can have a snack too. And they don't always have a snack, most of the time they just want their kid to have a snack. But just having that option is, is a huge deal.
And Liz walks around and makes sure that everybody knows that they're welcome to have a snack. She'll come, go to the older, um, um, when I think of one gen- gentleman, that's how I was reading the newspaper.
I, and a lot of our seniors in our community do have food scarcity. So having the availability of food at our library is helpful to them too.
Absolutely, yeah. I witnessed that last week, um, there was a lot of activity. But I witnessed that specifically because the door was open, and I was, eh, I saw you offer, one of our patrons, would you like a snack, and like you, Amber said, reading the newspaper, and he grabbed it. And so, you know, it's for everyone, and I'm so happy that we're, you know, if, even if it's just a snack, it's like a little bit goes a long way, and we're helping as many people as we can, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And while I'm up here, I forgot to mention our amazing, uh, Imperial Public Library logo that Madison will model for you on the back of her sweatshirt, was, um, made by Madison. And we'll be using that in our program hopefully for years to come, it's a beautiful logo.
Yes, oh, great job, Madison. Thank you.
I was actually gonna say, can we get a pin of it?
Oh, the ideas are gonna start flowing over here.
I, I have a quick question, the grant, is it for a year or for how long?
Well, it's a partnership grant with Lunch at the Library, so we have it from winter, so January through March. And then in March, we hire and prep for our summer months, and then the Lunch at the Library takes over. And we can apply for it, um, to just pick up in the fall, depending on what administration wants to do, um, and how winter season goes. And it seems to be, uh, a simple grant. Everything about it seems simple and easy to do, so I would like to see it happen in the fall.
Definitely, yes.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? No? No? Okay. Um, so we're gonna go on to item A two, presentation by Amber Holler, library administrator and Madison Taylor, library teen intern regarding Sir Optimus Steam Wars Dream It Be at Conference.
So Madison is going to be, um, which you've already met her, she's our teen intern, one of our teen interns. And I had the pleasure of spending the day with her at the amazing Sir Optimus Steam event. Um, so she's gonna go ahead and share with you, um, some of her, um, outcomes.
Does this one have a slideshow or? Thank you, so she's amazing. Um, well, hello, everybody. Um, like Amber and Liz said, my name is Madison Taylor, and I am one of the teen interns at the Imperial Public Library. Um, to begin, I just wanna say thank you to the Sir Optimus International of El Centro for sponsoring and helping put all this together. It was definitely a huge experience and it was really fun. Um, a lot definitely happened. As you see, the picture on the left was the very beginning, and the picture on the right was the very end. I was there for about six hours, um, talking to, um, a bunch of students who are interested in the Imperial Public Library, whether it be internships or what they offered. Um, it was definitely quite the experience, not only for me speaking to students, but also meeting different professionals as well. For example, the, um, professionals from NASA, it was definitely quite fun, and I loved it. We provided, um, buttons, so we used the button machine that the library owns. And I could estimate that we made about over one hundred buttons. So the buttons were definitely popular, and a lot of the kids enjoyed it as well. Um, like I said, meeting all these people was spectacular, and I learned not only about like myself and liking to speak to others, but about other people as well. Um, a lot of, um, people my age, mostly like, s- um, high school students, were interested in the opportunities the library offered such as internships. So I was able to speak about past internships, since I've been interning at the library since my freshman year, and I'll be graduating this year, so it's been around four years of me at the library. So I was able to explain a little bit about Lunch at the Library, or diff- the past Makerspace internships that I have done. And they seemed very interested as well, so I'm hoping that I was able to ch- um, influence some students to come and apply, and definitely try out for the certain positions, because it's a great opportunity and it was really fun. Um, we did meet a lot of people from all the schools around the valley. Um, I noticed people from El Centro, I met people I knew from Imperial, Callexico. And so it was really great being able to spread word about the Imperial Public Library, and not only the internships that it provides, but everything else that it provides as well. A lot of things that I noticed the kids, and even adults who came to our table surprised about, were the, um, national park parking like tickets, and I absolutely loved that. They were like, oh wow, the fact that the library does offer that is amazing, and I think so as well. So it was definitely a great experience in that aspect as well. Um, along with the parking tickets for that, the telescope that we're able to have on display, people love that as well. Eh, it's great that the library is able to offer all these different things. It's not only opportunities of internships, but the different objects and books, of course, that people can, are able to check out. Um, I actually remember this picture very specifically, because this, I talked to this, um, girl for at least ten minutes. Um, she was my age, um, El Centro, I believe, and she was really interested in the summer internships. And so it was nice being able to share what I could and explain what it's about, why it actually makes a difference in our community, and how it's just a great experience overall, and it will prepare you for the future, whether it be public speaking or anything. So this, this whole event was great, a great source of being able to talk to people, being able to teach people about what the, uh, library has to offer. And it was just fun in general, it was a whole Star Wars themed, and that was definitely fun as well. Um, so overall, I would say that the Steam Wars event was great. It was a great sense of just like everybody coming together and learning more about the valley, because even though we do live in a small town, it's not like one person can know everything about the valley. So it's fun to kind of explore where we live and learn what, um, different places have to offer as well. Um, especially just being able to talk to most of the people, it was really fun, and it was a great experience. And even though I was really tired at the end and took a big nap when I got home, it was definitely, it was definitely one of the greatest things that I've done for the communication aspect and just being with the library. I'm definitely gonna miss the library a lot. So thank you, um, to Liz and to Amber as well for allowing me to stay this long at the library and, oh, and do all these fun things, especially the Steam Wars event specifically. Um, if you guys have any questions specifically or anything, that was all, thank you.
Thank you.
Last, there was a last picture on there, um, that, um, Rose Fior- Fiorenza, uh, she was actually a presenter at, uh, the same Steam Wars event. And, um, I didn't recognize her because it had been quite a few years since, um, she had worked summers for, um, um, for the department I was running. And I put that, I included that in there because I look forward to taking the photo with you one day.
I'll definitely come back.
But would you like to share what you're made, what you're going to school for?
Uh, yeah, okay, um, I'm planning to go to school for molecular and cell biology. So I can, um, hopefully the end goal is to become an anatomical pathologist in a research hospital.
Oh my goodness.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That, that's the plan.
Yes, oh my gosh, well, the sky is the limit. Um, you've done an amazing job here, and you're so well-versed that I, that doesn't even seem like, that's the pinnacle of where you're going. So thank you for everything you've done, and I'm glad this was such an amazing experience, and thank you for spearheading that, and yeah, that's incredible.
We'd like to thank, um, our trustee Sukumara to, for inviting the Imperial Public Library to participate and have a, a table. It was a great outreach opportunity for us.
Eh, it was something that occurred at the last minute, um, we had been working months, months on this project, and we are, eh, we raised a sizable amount of money that allowed us to continue it to the next year. Um, we're having sponsors return, we're hopefully reaching out to more, um, we had a lot of good, uh, feedback from it, and now we're in collaboration with, uh, official collaboration with NASA. So we'll continue to bring that, and, um, uh, like I said, we're gonna be able to have educational awards now because of it. So because you attended, I would like, hopefully you would be okay with giving your email, because we are opening it up, and so you would be eligible to receive a, uh, to apply for the scholarship.
Oh, then yes, thank you, that helps a lot, thank you.
You're welcome. So it just, it was a very, very inspiring event, but not only that, cause, um, I get teary-eyed because it was a lot. Um, it really showcased and highlighted how important libraries are to the Imperial Valley. So next year, if I have my way, we're gonna have Library Row, which is gonna have all the libraries this time, because the students, uh, in each of the cities need access. And so I believe at this point, there was not one city from the Imperial Valley that did not attend this event. So next year, we'll be reaching out even further to, um, all corners of the Imperial County this time. So thank you, and I hope to see you back there next year again.
And then everyone's welcome to come visit us too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
My goodness, I, alright.
I believe third, um, presentation is, um, Liz, that one is going to be canceled, correct? The?
The A three?
A three. The, um, video.
Hugh Animation System.
Yep, that's canceled.
Yeah.
We are, uh, so grateful for the RIT team making sure it's safe. So once it gets installed and we get our hands on it, hopefully you'll get a cool video.
Yeah, okay, so we'll save this one for next time, thank you. And then item A four, presentation by Dr. Donna Castaneda, professor at San Diego State University Imperial Valley Campus regarding the California Humanities Teen Poetry Project.
Okay, good evening, thank you so much for having me here. Um, today I'm gonna be talking about, uh, a, a project that I did, uh, that I did last fall. Uh, it is a poetry workshop project. And I did it here at, um, Imperial, uh, library, City of Imperial Library. Um, and I started here, and I thought I was gonna stay here. You know, the, I, I have to tell you, I wrote this grant, and I completely changed everything, so, uh, but I'm gonna tell you about it. And, um, first of all, um, a total of, of fifty-three youth participated in thirteen workshops across, um, uh, the county, uh, not the whole county, but it will, I was here in Imperial Public Library, Desert Oasis, and Fez- Phoenix Rising High Schools, um, and the Camarina Memorial Library. Um, so across the fall, I, I was in these three different places. Um, and approximately eighty to ninety poems were produced by youth across all of these workshops. That's a lot, uh, that's quite a bit actually. Um, and they were aged fourteen to twenty. Um, and this is, like I said, it's a serious amount of creative production, uh, and writing by youth. Uh, and, um, eh, eh, and it really points to this wealth of expressiveness in this group despite few opportunities for, 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 you know, engaging in that expressiveness. Uh, high school kids and youth in general are hard to program for. You know, it's hard to do programs for that age group, they're, I know why. If you, you came to my workshops, you would know why too. Um, but, um, but, but it was wonderful, uh, they did such wonderful work. Um, and then we also produced a chapbook. And a chapbook is, a chapbook is, is a very typical type of publication in poetry, and I just wanted to show you. These, these are examples. These, these are examples of chapbooks. So they're small books. Um they're usually tw- between twenty to thirty, maybe thirty-five poems. Um I even have mine right here. I'm gonna show you. Uh and um and one of our speakers, this is her chapbook. So we produced a chapbook uh in our um sessions. And um the chapbook uh contains a marvelous set of poems. Um I loved them. They were just so good. You you, you know, it's, poetry is not for everybody, right? Um I know that, but they were just wonderful. And if you read the chapbook that we produced, which is right here, um you would see that as well. It's quite uh quite amazing. And as a matter of fact, Madison, who left. She's so multi-talented and you didn't know. She is quite a prolific poet. I mean, she produces a lot of poetry. She's been doing this all along. And so a couple of her poems are here too. Um and um so and it's and it's a tangible product um that came out of the workshops. Um you know, I see, of course, all the poems, but now other people can see at least some of them. They're really wonderful. And um the cover art uh was also done by a person, a young person here in Imperial. His name is Micah Mendoza. Uh he's an artist. Uh he graduated from Imperial High School. So he did this beautiful cover art for us. Um and also, the chapbook is going to be included in the collection here in Imperial Library, as well as the Camarena Memorial Library, as well as the San Diego State Imperial Valley Library. And their their um, I forget what it's called, that section. Anyway, I'll I'll figure, I'll remember in a s- a second. But anyway, it's a section of the library that includes um uh literature that's pertinent to this region. Um anyway, so so we did that. There's a picture of it. Um and I just wanna say that Micah, when I talked to him about the cover art, I I know him, so um he, you know, so I had gone, uh actually, Madalena knows him too. And um we 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 know him because he's, he was a friend of my son's, who also graduated from Imperial High School. And um I talked to him and I said, you know, I I would like something that's a little bit, you know, some iconic something or other uh about Imperial Valley, maybe an acotillo plant, something like that, you know, because I like nature. And he showed me that. He did it like in a few days. He's a graphic artist. So I just wanted to highlight that. He's so good. Um and so um and we had a number of really outstanding uh poet speakers. They were fabulous. Youth love them. Um and our last and culminating event will be an open mic event at the Three Sixteen Cafe in El Centro. There's one here in Imperial, but we're having it in El Centro, um just because the owner wants us to do it there. Um and so we will showcase the chapbook as well as the 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 poems by the authors who are included in the book. Um and finally, I just, I I have to always mention that I received a small grant from the California Humanities um uh to provide uh 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 support, funding for this project. So anyway, so I just want to let you know that and I several extra copies. I didn't know I would, but I do. And I'm going to leave them here, and if you would like a copy, you are free to take one. Um so anyway, any questions or comments?
Do you plan to be doing this again next year by any chance? Only reason why I ask is that is it's a very good thing to have. It would be wonderful to see how it grows and changes year after year.
Oh, yes, I I would love to to do it. I don't know if I'll be able to. I'm actually retired. Retired person. I'm retired from San Diego uh State University in Imperial Valley and I um my area is is social psychology, but I also have an MFA in poetry. You know, I have these these you know, because like, just like Madison, she's a scientist, but she's also a poet. You know, there's like this this combination. We all have different facets um to ourselves, but I I don't know. I would love to see, um what I would like to see actually, um this is probably TMI, but I would, I would like to see the cities here designate a poet laureate. You know, where each city or maybe the county has a poet laureate that can organize um and and carry out these kinds of activities throughout the county. Um San Diego has a poet laureate. He's great. He just finished his tenure. Um the the US has poet laureate, um who's just finishing uh her tenure. And and they organize and and develop projects surrounding poetry. Um and that would be wonderful to have here. I would, I'd like to see something like that. Maybe the city of Imperial, because Imperial is is kind of a, you know, uh because I lived here for so long. I know it's a, it's a town that really does innovative things. It'd be nice to see Imperial get a po- its own poet laureate. So I don't know. We'll see. We'll see how it goes. I don't know what I'll be doing next year, so. But anyway.
So Donna, and the event on Saturday, February fifteen, at what time is it?
Oh, it starts at uh eleven thirty. And it goes to one thirty, and I hope youth will show up. They are, um one of the things that I found, and this is one of the things that changed is, you know, because I thought that I would be here. And they would all come here. They would just show up. Magically. But you know, kids don't have, they don't have cars. Um and they have to get somebody to drive them. And um I know one person here who who was in the workshops. He said, oh, I'll ride my bike. And I said, but but it's not the Three Sixteen here. It's in El Centro. And he said, well, I don't know. And so so we'll see how many kids show up, but it'll be lovely and you will get to hear some wonderful poems, so. So it's ten thirty to one thirty in El Centro.
Which day?
Uh Saturday. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for putting that on here.
Thank you. And I I just wanted to give a shout out to the the Imperial Library staff. They are, they're quite, aren't they wonderful? I really enjoyed coming here. Um they they are so supportive and um and actually, to be honest, I t- this is another thing that changed. I never included this item in the grant. I got the idea from the staff here. And so um, yeah, so they're just great.
That's incredible. The things that come out of the library. I love it.
Dedicated people.
Oh, yeah. It's the people, the people that make the magic. Um okay, anyone else have any comments or questions? No? Okay, we'll move on to item B. B one, approval of the minutes for the regular library board meeting of October eight, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you.
Roll call. President Hernandez? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, uh um um approve.
I I apologize. I'm the one that did that. I apologize. Trustee Altamirano?
Yes.
Trustee Vanda? Trustee Sotom- Sotomayor? Four zero, motion passes.
Okay, so item C is work session. Um so we have item C one, California Freedom to Read Act.
Okay, um.
Madam President, members of the library board, um we have four items uh here for um di- open discussion. Um so uh the first one is the California Freedom to Read, which is an assemble- assembly bill that was passed. Um it's an assembly bill eighteen twenty-five that was passed on September twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-four. Uh the California Freedom to Read Act requires every library jurisdiction directly receiving state funding to establish, adopt, and maintain a written and publicly accessible collection development policy by January first to two thousand twenty-six. The state library has created a webpage to help libraries comply with the law and has um provided a very nice um checkoff list. The library board approved the Imperial Public Library Collection Development Policy in November two thousand twenty-three. Um and the policy is being reviewed um and revised to include an updated mission statement. Um some required statements, identify the process for the community to um members to request materials to be um reconsidered for inclusion. And in addition to posting the policy on the website. Um so we brought this before you because um this provides some changes about book banning. Um it's adding some um wording to our our um our collection policy that we'll be bringing back to you to for review and um to recommend for approval. And then um our wonderful city attorney is available if you have any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments? She studied hard. Oh, this is, this is good. I read it. I think, yes. Can approve because there's nothing to approve yet, but um um item C two, library surplus items.
The um new furnishings, um as you're aware, uh were purchased for the literacy room to create a more wel- welcoming and functional space um in the small space that they have. Uh the past equipment that we had were worn and broken task chairs, um very worn. And computer tables um that were acquired approximately fifteen years ago or more. Uh the small literacy room currently houses a bulky reception desk uh that we've had for several years. It's a nice reception desk um with a matching filing cabinet that um and along with some uh no longer in use metal fa- filing cabinets and storage cabinets. They're all in that small space that the learners are going in there um to um utilize for the literacy services. In addition, the library is storing um plexiglass barriers that were removed after the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um so all city departments have been notified of the surplus items. However, nobody departments um have um need or space for those items. So the staff is requesting the Imperial Public Library Board of Trustees to recommend the Imperial City Council to consider declaring the department's current inventory of outdated worn and no longer in use items as surplus. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, so it's gonna be moved out of there um as soon as as possible?
I need to check to see when the soonest I can take it to council. Uh today was the deadline to submit. But after that, we need to go through the process, the cor- um the city policies on how to um uh determine the chairs as um so we can throw those away and then the tables and and those things that can be used, how we can um put them up for sale.
Okay, yeah, that would be good, because I know that there are a lot of patrons that come to the library and we do not want them in a room that has unused old furniture. Um it should be a welcoming place, should be a place where they're not crowded in. So it would be, it is, if the city can help as quickly as possible to get all of that out, because the, it's not a good look.
No, it's not.
For us at all. Is there a policy of where it's supposed to go? Because I have a suggestion. You know, if nobody knows um would it be possible if the city doesn't have any plans for it to donate it perhaps to a shelter or, you know, like Woman Haven? Um for them to make use of it, because I I'm not sure what the policy is.
Well, without getting into legalities, I would assume that it would be proper to go to a nonprofit like Woman Haven. I think that would be once it's declared surplus, I think uh
Okay.
the staff can address that and
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So do we need to make um any recommendations right now? Okay, so I make the recommendation to the city council to consider declaring the department's current inventory of outdated worn and no longer in use items surplus.
Do we need a second?
Do we need a second?
I second.
Thank you. And that literacy room is gonna start getting love because it is a work in progress.
Okay, do I need to take a roll call on that? I'll do roll call. Not roll call.
When the computers are working, you can do it manually, but
I apologize. Okay, uh President Hernandez? Vice President, uh um, excuse me, trustee Altaramo? Trustee Banda? Trustee Sotomayor? Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item C four, fiscal year planning overview.
Oh no, okay, so this is our um third item um that we won't get too deep into. Um we originally, uh the library board had planned to uh schedule a workshop to discuss um plans, um long-term plans for the library, um ideas for events, um things that they wanted to see um in the library. Um however, we are entering um February now and we are um moving quickly into the budget. Um um getting things taken care of. Um so I've I've submitted this for your review and for your consideration of agreeing to a time where the library board would like to meet for a workshop um to go over the plans for the next year for advisement. Um or to identify a um co- a ad hoc committee on that we can um meet, um so we can streamline the process to ensure that we have a voice from the trustees uh with the um budget planning process.
On item one of the staff report, um is this all the current staff we have? Or is this any new?
These, these are a our current um staff that we have. Um I'm happy to report that our library assistant Julia, um she accepted the open position of library technician. So um she is the library, uh excuse me, not library technician, the literacy coordinator, which is the limited term position um running this literacy programs. And our part-time library page, who has been assisting the um circulation desk when there's a need when we do not have a library assistant available due to um being out for different reasons. Um he applied for the full-time library assistant position and he accepted the position today. So at this time, uh we have all of these positions and then the part-time page will be put on hold for now.
I don't, like you said, we don't wanna get into the nitty gritty of this, but I do believe at this point, how many people work on uh grants currently?
We have um myself and we all have our specialties with our grants, so there's three of us. Um it's myself, um and then Liz oversees the lunch at the library. Um those type of grants. Um there there's more to that. I don't wanna just say lunch at the library. There's a lot more. She does everything. Um and the, and then you'll see in the notes um in the um administrator's report, she actually applied for a grant, which I was very proud of her, and she said, but we didn't get to move forward with it. And I said, still, it's um, I believe it was seven seventeen hundred applications. And out of, we were the top si- top sixty that were selected from a national grant. Um however, for the quick turnaround time and the amount of time it would take um for it to be completed, we weren't able to move forward with that. Um but, so it's Liz who works on certain grants. Um and then we have our library assistant who oversees the Zipbook Grant Program. And then then myself.
Okay, and the the reason why I ask is that um in addition to applying for the grants, you have to manage programs, including yourself with all admin. Is there any room in the budget of possibly adding somebody else to specifically focus on grants, since the library does function on grants? Um, and I know that it is a process to try and find different sources of funding because we do not have a nonprofit status. Um, there's a lot of time spent in that and possible that we could add, you know, uh possibly a for part-time position. Or if that's not possible, then uh perhaps look into a consultant that can help. Because you're writing the grants, but at the same time you have to run the library. And we don't want to exhaust the staff, obviously, and there's only so many hours in the day, so that's why I ask about that. And then one more, being that I think is very much important, just one other position would be a public outreach position, so I, those are, those are my comments, simply because um I wanna make sure that the library is functioning at full capacity. And it seems to me that you have been getting a larger uh crowd of people coming in here. And that is something that we need to be mindful of, I believe, so those are my comments. Anybody else?
I agree. Um, and I do see that there's a, a note here that the deadline to submit the departmental position request and justification form is this week. Um, so I don't know, I mean, you guys are like up to here sometimes with all your work. So if there is another opportunity, I would love to see that because you guys are, I mean, there's so much more coming in and the team that we have is small but mighty, but we do not want you guys to be, you know, unable to keep doing your full capacity because you're stretched and going in all different directions and I've seen it. So um I would love that for you guys. I would love that for the library and this would set us up for the future, right? Not just for now, not just for, for who we currently are here, but um just for the overall being, you know, in the long run. Um, but if there is any, is there any other question, anything else to comment?
Uh, just one more comment that I, the reason that I worry about this, simply because I, I understand that the city does, you know, uh make sure that the funds flow into the library. I mean, it's very important, but I don't want it to be a drain on the city in terms of money flowing here when there's other departments that do need it. And the fact that if we could, if it would ease up, ease that um in the budget. So that way the library can focus more on the grants instead of having to pull from the city all the time. So that's, that's, I guess, my concern.
Quick question, just to go back, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you wanna set also before we leave a time and a date so we can?
We can definitely um reconnect on a date to give you everyone time to look at that. I don't know if that needs to be made. Um, at this time, I'm looking at this city attorney. No, okay.
Just to make sure, I, I understood that we.
Yeah, um, so.
And that will be for next year's budget or for?
Well, for twenty-five, twenty-six, so um that will be July first through June thirtieth. And um I don't have the schedule yet, but January is the time to s- I mean, and I'm already, I mean, I, I, I have everything laid out. But I wanna ensure that I include your voice and your vision.
Okay, cuz we run on a fiscal year then.
Were you thinking um another meeting like this in the evening or?
That would be up to what works best for um the whole board.
Yeah, cuz I, I have a vision. I have ideas, but um it takes all of us and, and it takes the people to be able to do certain things without being stretched in different, different ways. So um, yes, I would love to sit down and talk about that.
Yeah, perhaps we can schedule a meeting with, uh, that's kind of hard, that everybody can come. But if we do eh some homework ahead of time or coming with ideas or as precise as possible, that will be eh, that, that way we will have a more effective meeting.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Yes.
So, um, what I'll do is I'll send um maybe a poll out to everybody to see what works.
That would be great. Okay, anything else? No, okay, so item C four, um and that's gonna be friends of the library. So um Yvonne and I did touch base on friends of the library. And I think what we had set off or left off on um last meeting was having a name. Um, but I also know that uh we had no direction of starting. Um, if we needed to start the application or how that needed to go. Um, so I think if, from looking at the bylaws, I think we might need to go to council first. Um, for advise, like advising, I'm like advisory. Um, just to know how they want us to kinda go about it now that we've identified it. Um, I think the name should be something, I mean, a play of words on friends of the library, friends of Imperial Library, Imperial Friends of the Library, like. Right, we'll just see what's available with that, but I think um if we can a- address the council at one of the next meetings um and make a cutoff so that we can see what direction they want us to go in. We're not opposed to getting in um the nitty-gritty of helping doing the application. But we do wanna make sure that we do not um, I guess, overstep, right, if we're supposed to be advising and, and um with that, that would also like how Yvonne had touched base was um help with the grants that nonprofits would be eligible for that we are currently not. Um, and we had also said something else. Oh, um, you're supposed to outline who your board is going to be. And so we talked a little bit about that of, we would like to see um maybe one of the trustees on the board maybe as a liaison, um but open it up to the community. That way, you know, we are getting um the community's input. Um, and, and it's gonna be, it's gonna take a lot of work. It's gonna take a lot of us. Um, but other than that, Yvonne, is there anything you wanna share?
Hmm, not this time, but I know, it's homework Dennis Thomas. So I mean, really, we're looking at you to help guide, guide this and just to make sure that we get the library, you know.
During, during the reports, I'll, I'll provide a brief comment on some of the things that you've mentioned.
Alright, so um I think we'll move on to the reports. Item D one, staff report.
Um, madam, um president, board members. Um, before you, you have a six and a half page report. It includes quite a bit of information um that, uh since we haven't um been able to meet um since October. But um basically um it's providing updates about, um there's some legislative updates. Um, one we discussed briefly uh this earlier. There's also um an additional one that was passed um through the senate bill. Um, um, three twenty-one, which is a local public library um partnership program. And I am currently serving on the working group for this through the state library. Um, so I can get kind of a, ahead of the game. I was fortunate to um be, be part of this. So we can move forward and um um meet the deadlines that are set before us. Um, the first deadline is Ju- January first, two thousand twenty-six. Um, to um have a partnership with the local um, the um school districts to s- um provide all um children the ability to obtain a student, student success card, which is a library card um by the third grade. And so today was my first meeting and um it goes out to twenty twenty-nine where um we will be providing statistics on how many children actually um have library cards by the third grade and a lot more information. How many people are using the library, um using the resources? There's a lot of resources that we have that um for homework resources and a lot of schools, um uh Imperial Public, I, in the Imperial School District, we're fortunate to have libraries in the Imperial Schools. But um there's a lot of schools out there that don't have libraries, so they really depend on the public libraries. Um, so I'll stop there, so the meeting doesn't get too long. Um, and then before you, you have quite a few um library reports that were submitted. All of those were sub- submitted successfully on time. Um, our most recent ones were our mid-year report for the literacy and our zipbooks um mid-year report. All, all those were submitted and there was um everything, um there was no findings, no, no questions, everything looks great. And there's a small um visual for you for the California State Library Public La- Library Survey that was submitted in October. And um then there's some grant-based opportunities. Uh, we briefly talked about the summer lunch at the library. This year we received um with Liz applying for this grant, twenty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars. And so she will be on this, this funding, this money is going to fund two part-time intern leads um to oversee the four um interns. Uh, that will be um providing these program, pro- programs and uh en- enrichment activities along with the lunch at the library. And it'll um provide um um opportunities to purchase more materials as well. And that program is going to be running for nine weeks this summer. It'll start um June sixteenth, the last day of school is the um June, I believe it's June seventh or somewhere around there, so it's one week after school is out. And then it'll run through August eighth. And so that um program we will hear, have here at the library um every Monday through Friday for lunch at the library. In addition to that, uh we'll have one off-site um program that will be Tuesday through Thursday. And that will be at an affordable housing complex at Las Palma, Palmeras. And uh let me see. Um, the C L A grant we talked about, um so you, you have that information, so I won't um take your time on that. Our Park Pass um program along with our stargazing kit. And then we do have um four California State Library Grant Opportunities. It's due March twelfth. I have been um uh brainstorming. So um and then looking at the needs here um in our, in our community that, um looking at the population that we serve. And so um I'm open to answer any questions for that. Um, so there are four, there are four that uh we can take advantage of and hopefully I'll, I'll be able to get those submitted in time. Um, they're due March twelfth by noon. So, um usually I like March twelfth by eleven fifty-nine at night. Um, I had mentioned the Carnegie Libraries Grant Initiative. I was very proud of um Liz for being selected out of fourteen hundred and seven um applications nationwide to be the top sixty. So um I, we applaud her. And then I had mentioned to you already about our literacy coordinator position, um being filled by um our library assistant. Um, one of the um success stories that I shared in the mid-year report for the um California Library Literacy Services Report, um because they love, you always wanna share stories, was um that we employed our library as a assistant who um in the past, the per- um participants or the learners that took um took the classes at the literacy um program. They would go to class and then they, they would leave. And it's become more of a welcoming environment and we all know each other now. They bring us food, they have us come in and during a potluck, they make the best food. Um, so they've gotten really to know all of us. And uh the person who, Julia, um really got to know these learners and she made a great went through a hiring process, um I was on the committee. And I had tear, she was the last person that interviewed and I mean, we had amazing people that applied. But I had tears, you know, as she knew, she knew the population she was serving. So that was the brag part in the report because the, the learners are using like the library and getting to know the whole library and all the staff. So that provided that opportunity. So I'm very proud of that. And then let me move quickly. Um, we got, gotta thank the master gardener volunteers. Um, I know a few of you saw the photos posted online this Saturday. They, they give up their Saturdays, they come out and they clean, you know, no matter what, how, temperature was lovely Saturday. But um but they did come out and they cleaned out the um our garden and so it looks nice. And it's ready for um spring planting. And then we also have our um spring seeds are ready um in the, in the library catalog, ready to check out. And um, let me see. Uh, future programs and events, you have everything before you. Uh, the staff was very excited and creative. Um, they are looking, there is a token reading day in March twenty-fifth. They want to celebrate it all week and then have a cosplay um a costume contest as well. So um, I think that's gonna be a lot of fun. Everyone's very excited about that. Uh, we are looking at, um in April, we have National Library Week coming up, National Volunteer, which is a very important week. And then Gardening Day. Um, and then April thirtieth, we are planning, we are working with the county uh to provide the El Dia de los Niños de los Libros, Children's Day Book Day event. Um, so we're hoping to have a, a nice um representation of um resources throughout the county and activities for the youth. And in then May, uh we'll be working with the county again to provide a, an event for National Older Americans Month. And June sixteen through the eighth, we mentioned lunch at the library. And then uh June ninth through the twenty-fifth of July, we have our summer reading program, which all staff is working on right now. We are short um staff uh to provide a toddler program, so we're really trying to figure out. Um, I'm thinking maybe a partner, we can reach out to I C O E E so, eh, um, early childhood education program uh to put, potentially have them come out and provide some ums, um, um programming. Um, but we want everyone involved on that. We've already, we've purchased some um, um, some small prizes, some, um, but this year we're going to be um requesting permission to seek donations and sponsorships. So we can actually level it up because our um, the theme this year is level up your, your library and it's game-based. And so uh we really wanna level up our, our summer reading program and have some grand prizes like a lot of other libraries have. Um, so we're looking at having prizes as they meet their goals, they can level up um to bigger prizes. And then at the end, the um have a grand prize for each level of reading, you know, toddlers, children, um teens and adults and they'll have a, a we'll see, we'll see how much money we can raise, but um it'll, it'll be something we can celebrate and have a, a fun celebration for the summer.
I'm in awe.
It's great.
Yeah, there's a lot of fun stuff happening. I did get in contact with my contact that I told you from um early childhood education program, I think is what it's called from I C O E. I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay.
But I went, you know, started my homework once I got home. Um, and I reached out to the person I know and she, she said, yes, we did have a partnership, not too sure, you know, what happened. And I said, well, we would love to have it back. So we're, it's all, hopefully they're all talking and they'll talk to us soon. Um, because, yeah, toddlers need to have a, a, a fun in this, you know? Um, but I'm excited. I am very excited to see everything that's happening.
I'll stand for any questions.
You know, Dennis, Dennis is gonna talk next also if there's no questions. I just wanted to bring up that um Tony, our parks director, currently has an application. I know it's different, but friends of Imperial Parks, so if you know people who are interested in applying to be a part of that group, um, it's online and we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, eh ju- just a, a couple of quick comments. Uh, first of all, after you go to the poetry event on Saturday, there's a city event in the evening from five to nine carnival. So there'll be the vendors on the streets, a lot of stuff for kids to do, rides uh and those kinds of things. Uh, I think there's alcohol available if you're so inclined. So that's five to nine on Saturday. Uh, with respect to grants, that, that is a uh, a, a subject that is difficult for us. Uh, because hi- historically, my observation is that the city of uh individual departments pursued grants in their own areas. But that, that is entirely kind of uh on top of operational things that they have to do on a day-to-day basis. And so I think you, you mentioned other options in terms of hiring somebody, which is a difficult thing. I uh, uh, and the org uh, uh hiring a consultant. And there are consultants out there, I, and so if you, if you've had good success with particular consultants, I'd be interested in hearing. Because um the feedback I've gotten on the consultants that very aggressively market themselves has, has, has not been a positive thing. Uh, and so if you're, if you, if, if, I, I'd be interested in hearing because I, what I'm what we're considering in that regard is doing it, doing a competitive. What we're considering in that regard is doing it, doing a competitive uh RFP. Uh for those sorts of services, uh uh and and again, the feedback I've gotten is that. The folks I've talked to, yeah, they we pay out all this money and then nothing happens. Or staff says, there's obviously putting together a grant is not an easy thing. And they said the staff felt like we did all the work. And then and then what all all we get from the consultant is a bill. And so um there there's there's all those aspects to it, but it is something that we're. Uh actively looking at just because every department uh uh has needs that that uh. Are be or maybe a bit out of reach uh for but for our budget.
Um on that, I can go ahead and send the information to Amber and to you, uh CC A- Amy, I believe, Amy Osuna. Uh do you want me to send it to her? Because I there is somebody that I actually do know that we have worked in the past that specializes sometimes with nonprofits. So um that has been a good experience and it's uh somebody that had to step back from. Their regular job because they have a child at home that needs them, but the work that they produce is very, very good with. No, actually, I would say that they have the experience in the background from understanding the Imperial Valley community very well, cause they're from here. And so a lot of times, like you said, the experiences with the grant writers have not been good, cause it's marketing with themselves, but they understand. What the uh socioe- economic background and everything is here in the Imperial Valley, so I would love to share that um contact with you, actually.
Well, one interesting statistic that operates typically against the city of Imperial is our median income. City of Imperial med- median income is now above ninety thousand, hard to believe when the, I think the county median income is somewhere in the forty. Thousand range, uh and so to the extent that is a component of the grant, we we have, we've applied. Uh for for grants that we were not successful and and we were told that was the reason why. One in particular, we partnered with the school district. Uh uh and the grant would have, I forgot the name of the grant, but basically that it was phases and the first step would be to come in and do a security assessment. And then just uh but anyway, uh so that often operates against us, so um. And the so that's where we are with grants, I mean, and 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 in 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 terms of the upcoming budget, that is something we're we're. Considering, we're looking at trying to find a way to fund something to bri- to provide assistance to all of the departments. Um with respect to the nonprofit, um that isn't an area that I engaged in i- in my. Law practice, so I'm learning and the Friends of Imperial Parks is kind of the guinea pig for my for my learning. And and a a lot of what it boils down to is. How 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 much involvement does the governing body want to have? Because if you recognize that the nonprofit is a separate entity, then management of that. To the extent that the governing body says, well, we wanna be in control. Inevitably, what that involves is it it starts then looking like this body, does the Brown Act apply? Uh all Public Records Act, all of those things, it to the extent it's it's uh uh private. Uh then then there's a level, a different, I think a different level of tax returns that need to be filed, so. There's all those moving parts, uh parks has, the Friends of the Parks has kind of navigated that. Uh but I think there still is some uh uh. Miscommunication, if you will, uh maybe a lack of communication with respect to. How all the players interact, how the city council is involved, uh obviously, the city council is concerned. To the extent it has the Imperial name associated with it, uh they wanna make sure that everything is operating properly. By the same token, it becomes a matter of, okay, if you're gonna, if indeed you're gonna be involved. To depending on the level of involvement that you want, it could bring some, a lot of other things with it. And that's not necessarily bad, but depending on what it is, it it's one more thing if you're gonna have staff as it is now. Uh the 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 a lot of the administrative work is is done by a s- a city employee. In in on their own time, uh uh and the 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 theory being from that staff person. Is that to the extent it's a standalone entity. Uh he doesn't feel like it's appropriate to be to be spending uh. When he's on the clock, if you will, working on a separate nonprofit entity, so there's that aspect of it. Then, on the other hand, if you get city employees involved, that's just one more thing that we're asking them to do. Uh that uh uh may may take away from their day-to-day things. So there's all that sort of thing to navigate and and but um uh we. Uh I know this is something that uh you uh has been brought up by this board from day one. And so we we've heard, we've heard, we've definitely heard you and so uh we'll attempt to help you navigate.
Thank you, I I looked back at my first binder and the president before. I don't even know if there was a president before me, but since twenty twenty two, so it's been a while, um. We just wanna, you know, help and I know it's gonna, it's gonna be a navigation for sure.
I I'm 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 told and I don't know if this should be recorded or not, but I'm told that. Currently, the Friends of the Parks has a uh employer identification number. And I I I'm given to understand that there's been cooperation between library and that and Friends of the Park entity. To use that entity to apply for certain things, is that cor- correct?
We we made one purchase uh with that with that I ID number to purchase our Tony Box collection. Uh like for forty percent off the price, so.
And and I will tell you that right now and um Tony who, someone, oh Tony Box, Tony. Okay, but um they they currently, part of their scope of work, which is one of the. You know, you guys all are involved in nonprofits in some way and and giving to charities, but um theirs includes youth. So anything tied to youth is within their purpose, so for now, and I'm not saying that this is the answer, but Tony is very. Helpful and friendly to be able to utilize that nonprofit, um so and we're also, so currently as well. You know, donations to a government entity, we're not set up exactly it with, you know, a formal program, but I I wanna make sure that you don't. Feel that you can't currently utilize those tools, cause I know we've talked specifically. That doesn't take us off the path you were discussing, I just wanna make sure you have that option.
Then the does that mean that it opens up possibly that if you're applying for a grant, let's say for STEM research that. If we're locked out of it because we don't have a nonprofit, then we can get it through. Parks and.
Yeah, yeah, so that particular, just we've been very carefully looking at the scope of it, because in in his view, youth associated with the library, you know. The it it would, they are separate and have a board, so um you know, in in that sense, but he, Tony's really the one putting in. A huge amount of the work and it does fit within the scope and I do believe they're open to that in the meantime, so. There are, yeah, that's there's openings, so people you know who are willing to participate, he's he's looking.
Okay, good to know, good to know, I mean, at least that's a workaround for some things, so. And in the process of trying to finally get the Friends of the Library going and I know it's gonna take a while trying to figure out the specifics, how. We would had have to be organized, cause like you said, there has to be direct communication between the staff. Get vi- the Library Board Trustees and the Friends of the Library, they have to have the same common goal and they can't be. You know, uh with different ideas, it has, they have to work together in a collaborative way, so. I look forward to doing that.
Okay, Dennis, is that all? Um so item D three, President and fifty reports, um I did come with Amber last week. We had a great meeting. It was, it was quite long, but we talked about so many things that we wanted to see. Um and ladies, we are going gung ho until July. Because uh that me, uh uh at that point, the first term, I will fulfill my first term. Um and I really want, uh my goal is to leave the library in a better place than we found it. Where that doesn't mean I'm leaving, that just means I wanna lea- see it in the better place than I found it from when I started. Um and so I don't know if there's any, then this was a good, I'm asking you guys. Um so there's certain things in the library that could be better, um so. Uh we, a hi- a hallway got painted, thank you so much, um but there's like a little space that is not. And so um then just like random little um housekeeping things that I would love to see if it's okay. Um a service day, you know, we can invite the board, if the board wants to come, staff if they wanna come, but the community to really. Pour back in, cause a lot of people come here and we just really want it to look as beautiful as possible, um. And so just to do the little things, you know, we can make a list of be like, hey, we.
Just the, from the lawyer's standpoint, cause ye- yes, I'm I it okay to do things. Climbing on ladders, you're gonna end up getting our insurance company saying no, so. What what it, I mean, if it's just cleaning up and and doing things like that, so you might have to discuss that that part of it, but.
So that was, that was the one of the things and um but I wanna say that's probably it. Um you know, we wanna be able to set up the library so that it's just working to its full capacity in the future. And that's why we seem very pushy, um but with the same, with the same token of wanting to ha- leave it better than I found it. Um by the time that the first term is up, so that is all I have to report, anyone else?
Um I I met with, we spoke briefly um on stuff and we were the ad hoc committee with the fundraising thing, so. Um yeah, it's whatever we can do to support the library, I look forward to working with the other trustees, new ideas, that's. When we talk about what the vision and the budget will be for the new year and then just. Um I will not be here at the next meeting, unfortunately, I will be in New York, cause I'm going to the United Nations, so. So unfortunately, I will miss it, but I'm being called somewhere else, so it's, I have to go.
Well, I don't have anything to report, but thank you for the wonderful work that everybody's doing here.
Thank you. It really, it really takes all of us, so um and the staff, so we're really, really appreciative. If anyone, if no one else has anything to add, and the audience, is there anything? You're good, okay, just making sure, um then I will adjourn um this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Imperial City. Library Board of Trustees on Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty five.